And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mathie?
Here.
Councilmember Boland?
Here.
Councilmember Milowamway?
Here.
Councilmember Emig?
Here.
Councilmember Painter?
Here.
Councilmember Correa?
Jen?
I see ya, Jen. Thanks. Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Crable?
Here.
Councilmember Bray?
Here.
Mayor Renner?
Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to turn to our city manager for the latest COVID-19 updates. Mr. Gleason, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Going to focus specifically on the vaccine distribution. That seems to be of the most interest to the community. The clinic is open on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Very specific group that's allowed at this point. It's 1A and 1B. And the county health department, their website can provide the most up-to-date information. Again, we are allowing the Grosinger Motors Arena to be used for this. Expect this to be a long-term relationship, at least six months, and would not be surprised if it doesn't go longer. And it's just such a great location to use that we control completely as a city facility. I know that there had been some conversations about some of the different locations that are empty in the community, but they're privately held. Not to say that they weren't considered, but at the end of the day, the arena was the best choice. Real quick, wanted to share that the vaccination that's been used up to this point has been Moderna, if anybody's interested. And also, our capacity is over 600 doses a day at this current time. And the total number in that 1A and 1B group that has been vaccinated, at least has received that first shot, is nearly 1,800. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. At this point, Madam Clerk, I'm going to turn to you for public comment, please.
Thanks, Mayor. We have quite a few up for public comment tonight. And I apologize, we have had a bit of a delay on our side in getting numbers named, so we'll continue to work through that. IT is helping me as well. With that said, if we could go ahead and start with Olivia Butts, that would be great.
Olivia, can you hear us?
And Olivia, you might need to press star six to unmute yourself.
Yeah, Olivia?
Hi.
Oh, we can hear you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure, go ahead, Olivia.
Awesome. Hi, and good evening. On behalf of Black Lives Matter, Bloomington Normal, I encourage you to pursue consideration for a welcoming city ordinance for the city of Bloomington. As one of the many community groups that was urging many of you to consider and adopt this ordinance about three years ago, it is time that we stand up and stand with our immigrant neighbors. As you will see tonight, we are not the only local community group that supports the revisiting of this ordinance, but just one of many who know that this ordinance will affect many of the local community that they work with every day. After we recently saw the passage of a false solution, the Welcoming America Ordinance, it's more important now than ever to create policy that stands up for immigrant community. Thank you so much for the chance to speak tonight.
Thank you. Next, Madam Clerk.
All right, and next up, we have Willie Halbert.
Willie?
Willie, you may need to press... Oh, you got it.
Go ahead, Willie.
Hello there.
We got...
Hi, this is... Good evening to the city council and everyone. My name is Willie Holton-Halbert, spoken before on public comment regarding Welcoming Cities Ordinance, and just wanted to reaffirm the need for such an ordinance. Bloomington has been known for a community that is inclusive. I have fought for over 40 years within this community to stand up for the rights of all. We have, we may have some differences, but there are some common threads we all share. We have families, we have our children, we work in our communities. And one of the things that we tend to get sidetracked is looking at the differences. As we look at the immigrants, one thing we need to consider is that they have rights that should be protected and should be cared for, they should be able to be with their children. Many of them are, work as essential workers and have contributed to our community, and we should adopt the Welcoming City Ordinance, which will advance a positive migration agenda by providing a venue for our city to share promising practices and policies that would build cohesive communities, one that embraces and includes immigrants and fosters opportunity for all. I believe all immigrants, regardless of migration status, should be shielded without fear of family separation, arrest, or deportation. I believe our city should adopt the Welcoming Cities Ordinance prohibiting local law enforcement, cooperation with federal ICE enforcement, deportation activities, protect individuals who have lived and worked here for years. I realize that you're considering the Welcoming America and nothing against that particular policy, but this one has meat, and it's the one that the immigrants are in support of and that our community as a whole are in support of. So I would hope that, as you consider this, that it deserves a vote. And I pray that you'll consider these thoughts and support our immigrant community before we all one. Thank you.
Thank you, Willie. Madam Clerk?
Next up, we have Carol Kuss.
Carol, are you there? Can you hear us? Carol?
Yes, hi. I'm Carol Kuss, Chair of the Central Illinois Chapter of the American Civil Liberties Union. The National ACLU supports the implementation of Welcoming City Ordinances. These ordinances are essential in building trust between the police and the community, including those without documents. As stated to me by a Mexican immigrant who is a member of this community, when people believe that they will be reported to immigration or when they fear that they will be viewed with suspicion because of how they look, then they avoid contact with police, even when it is to their benefit or to the benefit and to the benefit of the community. People who fear the police will not report crime or aid law enforcement. Department of Justice data shows that communities with Welcoming City Ordinances actually have lower rates of violent crime than those communities who do not have such policies. This is apparently from the increased cooperation with police that results from a sense of security and goodwill that comes with the assurance that a Welcoming City Ordinance brings. Illinois has implemented the Illinois Trust Act, which is a statewide restriction on the arrest or detention of undocumented citizens, citizens based on immigration status or detainee requests by immigration authorities. The Trust Act is not as broad and inclusive as a Welcoming City Ordinance. As well, many law enforcement agencies ignore the Trust Act, and there is no mechanism for individuals to redress any violation. Last of all, a Welcoming City Ordinance sends a strong message that the community supports treating individuals fairly and with respect. The ACLU stresses that the following elements should be contained within the ordinance: Inquiring or investigation into citizenship or immigration status will not be allowed except as required by state law. No threats or coercion by police or governmental authorities shall be made based on immigration status. No agent or agency will disclose information regarding citizenship or immigration status of any person unless required to do so by legal process or the authorized disclosure in writing of the individual or their guardian. Delivery of city services will not apply any special conditions based on immigration status except as required by law. City police shall not arrest, detain, or continue to detain a person based solely on civil immigration violation or ICE detainer. City police shall not permit ICE access to a person in custody for the purpose of immigration enforcement or notify ICE about custody status or release date. In short, a Welcoming City Ordinance affirms that it is a city's intent to be fair, just, and respectful with its immigrant population as it is with its general population. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next, Madam Clerk.
And next up, we have Don Carlson.
Don, can you hear us? Go ahead, Don. Don, can you hear us?
There you go.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Mayor Renner and members of the city council. My name is Don Carlson. I'm a resident of Bloomington and the Executive Director of Illinois People's Action. Nearly four years ago, IPA helped lead the Keep Families Together campaign in its effort for a comprehensive Welcoming City Ordinance for Bloomington and Normal. We continue to support a comprehensive Welcoming City Ordinance. A question that's been asked is why would a simplified ordinance be acceptable in Normal and not in Bloomington? Groups part of the Keep Families Together campaign may each have their own analysis, but for IPA, the answer is simple. Normal had little or no track record of engagement with ICE. Normal government and police were open to new administrative policy, disclosure, and transparency. Government and stakeholders met in good faith toward a resolution. However, Bloomington Police Department during the same period had four separate instances of communication with ICE, including asking ICE if they were interested in, quote, "an undocumented immigrant," unquote, in 2015. Bloomington government or police had no interest in developing policy with community stakeholders and maintained the status quo. The city of Bloomington simply failed in this basic social compact with its entire community. And as a result, we are here today with this still being unresolved. Finally, there's nothing that has been done in the past that can't be undone now with leadership and proper decision-making, including all stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Next, Madam Clerk.
And next up, we have Charlotte Alvarez.
Charlotte, can you hear us? Go ahead.
Yes, good evening. I'm Charlotte Alvarez, Executive Director of the Immigration Project. You all have heard me speak before, and I'm here again to support the movement towards a Welcoming City Ordinance. As I understand it, the proposal before you this evening is not about passing any one version of the ordinance, rather, it's a signal that there's work to be done to come together and craft an ordinance that meets our city's needs. Let's take this next step together. On the eve of the inauguration of our next president, I think it's a moment for us to remind ourselves of some founding principles, namely, democracy and federalism. Democracy and reason debate is essential for our communities. It thrives when we, when there are spaces that bring people with diverse backgrounds and ideas together in order to truly listen, learn, work towards the common good of all. This call for action on a Welcoming City Ordinance did not come for any one group or person. It wasn't meeting the need of the Immigration Project or any other organization. It was meeting a collective need that was collectively decided. Since this project started, we've had hundreds of people who have supported the effort, attended events, spoken before you as a council. In every council meeting that I have seen around this topic, public comments have been overwhelmingly favorable. Moving forward is responding to a real need that has been repeatedly articulated and expressed, and moving forward is what democracy looks like. Second, federalism. Federalism is enshrined in the Constitution. We all know that. It's built on the principle of separation of powers. And in Illinois, we have the great tradition of home rule that allows local solutions to local issues. The federalism system and our Constitution envision local governments making decisions that affect us. We might be in a new global era. We're all really shaped by federal and state laws, but we do have so much power to shape our local communities. And it is absolutely within the power of this council to determine how municipal resources are used and how municipal workers, such as the police officers, do their job and interact with federal officials. Deciding to move forward in this ordinance is a great way to show that our democratic values are valued and our local communities matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Next up, we have Carla Bailey Smith.
Carla, are you there?
Yes, hello.
Hey, go ahead.
Hi, I'm... Can you, you can hear me. Okay.
Yes.
I'm here tonight representing the Unitarian Universalist Church of Bloomington Normal. And our principles guide us to believe in the inherent worth and dignity of all human beings. And that means we are not just nice, but as you use, we seek to actively work for change in our communities, such as opening up our churches to provide sanctuary to those who would otherwise have been deported. I'm here today to ask our council members to take a step beyond being nice and welcoming and to ensure that we implement actual policies for our local law enforcement to engage respectfully with any of our immigrant residents, whether they are documented or not. If you put a welcoming sign in your yard or store window but aren't willing to even consider and discuss policies to keep families together, to support the American dream, then I say putting that sign up is disingenuous. If you support the Welcoming America Initiative but do not support codifying policies that protect our immigrant residents who come into contact with local police and build trust with our local police, then you are participating in something performative rather than something proactive. So therefore, please, consider this proposed ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Thanks. Next, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Next up, we have Robert Garcia.
Robert?
Hi, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, Robert. Go ahead, buddy.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Robert Garcia. I'm a local asylum seeker sponsor in Bloomington with ASSP, Asylum Seeker Sponsorship Project, and a community navigator with Immigration Project. I want to focus tonight on responding to one of the things that we've heard from more than one elected official on this council recently as to why they simply do not support a full Welcoming City Ordinance. As they have stated in these public meetings and to the media, they're not convinced it's needed. We can all agree that we cannot solve a problem that doesn't exist. That logic is very fair. But here is where your logic is gravely flawed, when you suggest that because you don't see it, it must not exist. Allow me to explain. If you're a person who is undocumented, you fear the police because any contact with law enforcement creates a tremendous terrifying fear that you will be deported, you will be ripped apart from your family, and in some cases, you will face imminent danger, including the possibility of death, if you were to be returned to your home country. These individuals do not contact the police, even when they are a victim of crime. In some neighborhoods, when a bad individual, an opportunist criminal, has identified a person as being undocumented, they will target that person. The immigrant might be repeatedly victimized, and yet they will refuse to contact the police because they are in terrifying fear of being deported, of losing their children, losing their job. Their entire family and livelihood is at stake. So no, you don't see them. And no, you don't see the problem because they choose to hide. They live anonymously out in broad daylight, and yet they are invisible in our community. They have no choice because we refuse to give them the protection that we're fighting for tonight. I'm begging you to understand that just because you can't see it does not mean that the risk, the fear, the terror isn't real. The problem exists. You have not had to witness it. I would argue that you're very lucky and in a position of privilege that you don't fully sincerely understand what the problem is. I can respect that. I cannot fault you for that. But I can fault you if you choose to say that because it doesn't affect you or because you can't see it, that you cannot be moved to support this ordinance. That is a very privileged and highly abusive way for you to use your power on that council. If you choose not to care, we can fault you for that. We will fault you for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Next up, we have Jay Enriquez.
Jay, can you hear us? Go ahead.
Can you guys, can you guys hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, hello, hello, everyone. My name is Jay Enriquez. I'm an undergrad international business student at ICU, a son of immigrants, and have lived in Bloomington for three and a half years. Today, I would like to use this opportunity to speak in favor of the Welcoming Cities Ordinance and urge you all to vote in favor of it and to pass it. The passage for Welcoming Cities Ordinance is not an end goal, but rather a bare minimum of what a council who claims to be anti-racist should do. The passage of the Welcoming Cities Ordinance should serve as a stepping stone for this council to begin to work at ensuring the protection of all of the citizens and to prove its stance against racism, violence, and the most vulnerable communities. This opportunity would allow us to collaborate with our allies in Normal, to move forward in collectively building a resilient community that promotes diversity, equity, humanity, human rights, public health, education, and makes government accessible to all. The Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, or ICE, in its raw essence is the embodiment of this nation's racism and corruption. It is an agency that was created in response to the 9/11 attacks and has since used to carry out crimes against humanity at the will of the executive government. Most recently, it has been used by the executive government to justify the cruel response to the immigration crisis, and a quote "immigration crisis" on our southern border that has led to mass family separations and violation of human rights in detention centers. When in reality, between 2009 and 2014, more Native-born Americans left the US to set up permanent residence in Mexico than those who immigrated from Mexico to the US, according to the Mexican National Survey of Democratic Dynamics produced by the Pew Research Center. ICE is merely a shield that allows our government to continue to practice xenophobic extremism on innocent civilians and gives a platform to white supremacists and alt-right extremists, eerily similar to those who we saw attack the Capitol. These same groups that were present at the Capitol have infiltrated and make a significant proportion of ICE officers and those who collaborate with them. We cannot continue to communicate or provide resources to such an agency. And linked at the Capitol events, it has never been more clear that racism is being fueled by misinformation and has plagued our country and radicalized many, including people in our community. It is your duty as elected officials to use this opportunity to set a precedent of anti-racism and to begin to work to de-radicalize our community by providing clear and factual evidence, both simultaneously protecting civilians from becoming victims of the horrors of ICE and those who have fallen victims of misinformation campaigns. With this in mind, I urge you to vote yes in favor of the passing of the Welcoming Cities Ordinance.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Next up, we have Juliet Lynn. Juliet, oh, there you go.
Good evening. My name is Juliet Lynn. I'm a Bloomington resident, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Illinois State University's CALSA, which stands for Coalition Advocating for Undocumented Student Achievement. CALSA is a group of volunteer faculty, staff, and students that seeks to support, in any way we can, students who are undocumented or who have loved ones who are undocumented. CALSA wholeheartedly applauds any and all efforts of the council to make our cities welcoming to immigrants. The commitment to fulfill the promises that the Welcoming America Initiative sets out is a laudable first step. However, it remains an urgent priority that the city also pass a Welcoming Ordinance to ensure that no city resources, including the police force, are involved in immigration enforcement. Seventy-five percent of immigrant families have at least one undocumented family member, and the constant fear of deportation is a reality. Unfortunately, local police are often perceived as a threat because any encounter with police can potentially put a person at risk of being turned over to ICE. In addition to well-founded fears of abuse in ICE custody, detention, and deportation takes people from their jobs, cuts off sources of income for the family, tears loved ones apart, and other dangers. Allow me to offer you examples of the particular fears we hear about through CALSA's confidential conversations with students. Students who are US citizens but whose parents are undocumented have told us how their parents do not feel safe driving them to campus or visiting them in Bloomington Normal. These parents heartbreakingly miss family visits, graduations, and other events connected to their children's college experience. Imagine missing your child's graduation because you're worried about being stopped for a traffic violation. Or imagine being a college student who is unable to receive the support of your parents when moving into your dorm, or having your parents witness you cross the stage at graduation. Students who are undocumented are often fearful of going out and partaking in college social life. Imagine you are too afraid to attend a party because the police might show up if there is underage drinking or the music is too loud. Black and brown students coming from Chicago often fear they are more likely to experience discrimination downstate in our communities that unfortunately have earned a reputation for being more racist and more resentful of immigrants. They feel they are under higher surveillance here. There is a common misperception in Bloomington that these things do not happen here, but they do. You are unlikely to hear about it if you are not a trusted confidant of the community. When seeking solutions, it is important to listen to the people who are closest to the problem. Like others who have spoken tonight, in the case of CALSA, we are close to the problem because of the role we assume on campus in supporting undocumented students and families. On behalf of CALSA, I urge the council to pass the Welcoming City Ordinance, a Welcoming City Ordinance, to send a clear message to our community and those passing through it that we truly value the lives, contributions, well-being, and safety of immigrants regardless of their citizenship status. Giving these hard-working students the peace of mind that a Welcoming Ordinance can bring will benefit us all. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Next up, we have Louis Goslin.
Louis, can you hear us? Go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you. All right. Yes, my name's Louis Goslin. I'm the Public Relations Officer for the Bloomington Normal Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. But long before I was part of, before I held that role, I was speaking to this council three years ago about the need for a Welcoming City Ordinance. And at that time, our community came together in response to a crisis of xenophobia and the threat of open hostilities from an incoming administration towards our immigrant community. And today, we, we bring this issue at yet another crisis, a crisis for what, for whether or not we will continue to uphold the kind of democracy that we want to live in. And I have to say, I've worked on a lot of issues and have been involved with a lot of initiatives in this community and before I came here five years ago, but never have I seen such a far-reaching, broad base of support for one common cause. For three years, just as we heard tonight, we've heard from faith leaders, we've heard from people that work with students in the university, we've heard from students themselves, we've heard from workers and advocates and all different walks of life coming out and saying one thing, that this community needs a Welcoming Cities Ordinance that represents the values that we hold, that is ready to actually live up to the meaning of what it means to be welcoming, not just to say it, but to actually prove it in our deeds, to make sure that when we hear of these horrors, when we hear of the crises that are happening in these detention centers, that our immigrant brothers and sisters and neighbors know that this community will do its part in protecting them, that there is a safe home here in Bloomington. You know, I think that it's been well said throughout the speakers that there are a number of reasons that this is so important. Over the summer, we had an uprising where people came out and questioned and called for an open conversation to move a process of democracy, to talk about what it means to actually have truly safe communities and what public safety should look like. This is a step towards calling our community into that conversation. As Don Carlson mentioned, when it was surfaced that our local police department actually had communicated with ICE despite having said that they hadn't, this is a step in the direction of building trust with our city and our immigrant community. When we talk about the crisis of racism and the vision that has thrown our country into turmoil for the last four years, this is a step towards healing, and you have the power to make it happen. You have the power to prove to us that this process works, that our democracy works, and that we can count on you to listen to us when we call for you to make a change. So please, pass the Welcoming City Ordinance as introduced by council members Correa and Crable.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
Yes, we have Kevin Lopez.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to ask you to please support and vote yes on Welcoming Cities Ordinance. We know these people broke the law, broke an immigration law, but they're here. They work in here illegally, but paying taxes legally. They don't have any benefits from the government, but they're welcome to pay taxes. So Welcoming Cities is just a little better justice for them. So please, vote yes and support Welcoming Cities Ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
Yes, we have three more left. Matt Tosco?
Okay, let me see. Okay, we may have, we may have time for all. Go ahead, depending on how long it goes. Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Excellent. Yeah, my name is Matt Tosco. I live here in Bloomington. I'm speaking to this body today in full support of advancing the Welcoming Cities Ordinance. I'm speaking to this body today in full support of advancing the Welcoming Cities Ordinance as proposed by Jen Carrillo and Jeff Crable. This ordinance is how we, as a city, can begin to truly embrace everyone who makes our communities great, instead of being a city that is comfortable with allowing draconian federal agencies to target our most vulnerable. It's time to draw a line in our rich, central Illinois topsoil by passing an ordinance with teeth that officially says, no, we will not use our common resources to aid and abet ICE in any way. Without a Welcoming Cities Ordinance, the perhaps well-intentioned Welcoming America Initiative is nothing more than a watered-down, feel-good distraction from what we really need to be doing for our families and individuals in this community. Given the egregious abuses inflicted upon people and families by ICE that started before Trump's escalations and will continue under Biden, coupled with the fact that many undocumented immigrants are fleeing in humane conditions deliberately forced on them by U.S. imperialism, I think that advancing, advancing the Welcoming Cities Ordinance is a moral necessity, and that to choose not to renders one a pretty crappy person who has no place in leadership at any level. Don't be that crappy person. Advance the Welcoming Cities Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Next up, we have Dave Bentstone.
Dave, can you hear us, Dave?
Hello, Mayor Renner and City Council members. Thank you for taking the time to listen to these public comments. I am speaking on behalf of the Prairie Pride Coalition, our LGBTQI-plus community organization. Nineteen years ago, your predecessors on the Bloomington City Council enacted an ordinance that offered protection to members of our gay and lesbian community. Up to that point, my gay brothers and lesbian sisters who lived in Bloomington were vulnerable. There was no law, local, state, or otherwise, that prevented us from being fired from our jobs or evicted from our households. Nineteen years ago, your predecessors took the visionary step that made Bloomington a safer, more equitable place for people who historically had been marginalized and underserved. Opponents claimed that such an ordinance would open the floodgates to litigation, and some even argued Bloomington Normal would become the new Sodom and Gomorrah. History tells us that neither of those predictions came true. Instead, Bloomington became more welcoming, more accepting, and more prosperous for all of its citizens and visitors. Tonight, you are faced with another ordinance that has the potential to ensure that the city of Bloomington continues its efforts to provide a welcoming environment for all people. The Welcoming America Initiative that you voted to join at a previous meeting is a good initial step, but more is needed. Indeed, the Welcomed America website advocates for Welcoming Cities Ordinances and supports its members that pursue this option in their municipalities. Studies have shown that immigrants are less likely to report crimes or cooperate in criminal investigations if they fear potential deportation as the result of routine interaction with local law enforcement agencies. A Welcoming Cities Ordinance would remove this fear and increase the flow of information to law enforcement officials, which would in turn help in crime-fighting efforts. Our community would become even safer for all people who reside in, work in, and visit it. It is not lost on me that your meeting and deliberation of this ordinance comes on the heels of the birthday of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. A local church I attend fashioned its weekend message around a famous question Dr. King asked of our citizens: What are you doing to help others? As you reflect on this question, I hope you will answer it with your heart, with compassion, and with fairness to all. Please make this community better by supporting a Welcoming Cities Ordinance that would ensure safe and equitable treatment of all people who work and live in and who visit Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dave. Madam Clerk.
Sorry, it was on mute. Last up, we have Cara McMorris.
Cara.
Cara, you may need to press star six to speak.
Cara, can you hear us? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I am pastor of, a pastor at Hope Church and also a preschool teacher locally. I work with children and families who are already dedicated and involved parts of our community, and they also happen to be immigrants, that some are documented, some are not. These children are already parts of our local programming and our services. Their families serve you and I in Bloomington most every day. I spend so much of my time teaching our children that they are safe and that they are loved in our twin cities, that the grown-ups in this town love them and want what is best for them. Part of this is knowing that police officers will not be going out of their ways to divide their families. My vested interest comes with the fact that if a parent is removed from their family, if a parent is detained simply because of their immigration status, who is left to care for the rest of the family? It's us. It's your local nonprofit, because the only ethical thing to do is to continue to love on and serve these families. But we, as nonprofits, end up, end up cut off at our knees, which you have heard from other speakers tonight who represent nonprofits. If you choose to eliminate this topic from your coming agendas and refuse to continue moving forward, you're not only speaking volumes about our lack of welcome as a community, but you're deciding for these children, who we are already obligated to and responsible for, not to offer them a sense of peace. This ordinance is not about the presence or absence of immigrants in our community. It is about giving a sense of peace to these children, to these families who are already here working, who already call Bloomington home. All of our children deserve the peace and certainty that their community leaders, that you and I are committed to keeping their families together. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for being a part of bringing more peace to the families of our community.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we're finished, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, that's all. We did have quite a few people who emailed public comment. If I could go ahead and read that list.
Go ahead.
Let's see, so we have Katie Hoy, Megan Rhea, Heather Hinkle, Carly Cottner, Christopher Thompson, Crystal Abel, Juliet Lynn, Trevin Gaffney, David Parker, Tate Skinner, Lawrence Moslin, Daniel, oops, sorry, Daniel Maloney, Michaela Atkins, Suzie, Susan Nembroni, Sarah Greenberg, Robert Garcia, Anthony Overton, Car Happ, Kyle Air, and B. Thomas.
Thank you very much. At this point, we're going to move on to our consent, excuse me, consent agenda, and we have item five A, consideration and action to approve the minutes of the December seventh, 2020, a day that shall live in infamy, regular city council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Councilmember Boland, second by the hand I saw from Councilmember Bray. Any discussion, corrections? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Boland.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue.
Yes.
Councilmember Ime.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to move on to the, under six A, is a state-of-the-city address, and I'm going to try to keep myself to about ten minutes. I appreciate everything. One of the things that certainly I don't have to tell anyone who's listening, or any of my colleagues in the city council, or any of our staff members, including Mr. Gleason, that it reminds us of, these are the times that try men's on women's souls. Twenty twenty started out like any other year in the city of Bloomington, and yet it ended like nothing we had ever experienced before. But one thing is constant, that the city of Bloomington is strong, and we have much to reflect on with respect to pride, and much that we need to look forward to, many challenges that we need to address moving forward, including things like a Welcoming Cities Ordinance, which is, I think, by any reasonable analysis, well overdue, and rejoining MetCom, something else that, by any reasonable analysis, although a very different kind of policy, is long overdue. So there are certainly things that we have faced and challenges that we have dealt with, and I have to say, I'm very proud of the city council, I'm very proud of Mr. Gleason, our staff, and others, Mr. Jurgens, and many others, Madam Clerk, and others who have, have done an outstanding job in these trying times. Now, again, COVID-19 brought us an instant upheaval to life as we knew it, and our worlds in many ways were turned upside down. We had this invisible enemy that forced us to change many aspects of our lives and how we do things. We also had, amidst all of this, the killings of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and the stories of unequal treatment and injustices by countless others that didn't make the headlines, that were exposed, a sickening divide in our country and in our world that we have to recognize it still exists and that we need to make progress moving forward. We just can't forget this year. We have to learn from this year and try to make progress so that we can come toward a new normalcy, whatever that might be, as we move forward. Now, in the midst of this all, again, as I mentioned, I was really proud of our city council, our city staff, and the community, our city government, to get things done in spite of the difficulties and situations that could have broken us. We did not, as many, if not most, cities that are our peers, we did not have to lay off dozens or hundreds of people. We managed to move forward. That didn't, doesn't mean that there was not pain. It just means we managed to avoid, thank goodness to the vision of the city council, the flexibility, the adaptability, the creativity of Mr. Gleason and his staff, of the things that we, what we have done. We never let these things stop us or hold us back. In fact, we're moving forward with many investments in our community in spite of the difficulties that we faced throughout this year. We never shut down things, and we took these challenges and we turned them into opportunities. Now, the city of Bloomington and the city council, for example, directed nearly a million dollars, a million dollars, in direct aid to our local residents and our businesses. And that was really critical. Now, that didn't make up for the lost wages, the difficulties, or the lost profits, but it certainly helped get people through, and it certainly sent a signal that we were all in this together. The city council knew that things were very tough for businesses, so we prorated liquor license fees, we suspended water shut-offs and late fees, and made substantial adjustments to allow businesses to serve. And we tried to be as flexible and nimble as possible. Mr. Gleason, Melissa Han, and others did whatever they could to ensure that our downtown was at least as vibrant this summer, if not more vibrant than this past summer, in terms of economics and a destination than we've had in many years. Now, we've also managed to ensure that when some businesses, in spite of many warnings and nudging, still violated COVID restrictions, we tried to turn this into a positive by donating many of the fees that, of the fees that we received, excuse me, to District Eighty-seven and Unit Five students and their families in greatest need. We also kicked off this year, believe it or not, sometimes lost amidst all of the difficulties, with one of the highest response rates in Illinois to the 2020 census, which is critical for us in terms of our planning for the future, not just this year, for the next year, for the next decade, and obviously our legislative representation in state legislatures, and obviously in the United States Congress. Now, amidst all of this, we were able to make progress on many fronts, including capital projects. As Mr. Gleason and I have said many times, we're not going to sit in the corner and hunker down in spite of the fact that we've got some difficult times. We made progress on many things like the O'Neill Pool Project on the west side, the library expansion in the center part of Bloomington, and the new fighter station on the east side to try to reduce nine-one-one response times on the east side. We've moved forward, and in addition, and those of you who've been on the council for a while, including Maboka, certainly realize the, and probably Donna Boland, because it's in reward, knows the difficulties, the Lutz Road project. So, you know, sometimes I feel like I want to say we shall, we have overcome, given the difficulties of that and the many years that we've gone forward. So we've not stopped making progress. We didn't hunker down in a corner. We didn't say, we can't. We said, we can. What can we do? We're not going to be irresponsible, but we're going to do absolutely everything that we possibly can, moving forward, to improve our community, so that we don't say, oh, gosh, this was a year, or a year and a half, or however long COVID is going to hamstring us. We didn't sit back and say, oh, you know, I don't know, let's just get by. We did anything but that, and I applaud the city council and our staff for moving forward. I'm also pleased with many, and I alluded to this earlier, many of the things that we've done in our downtown and helping to promote the energy and vibrancy of our downtown that we haven't seen in many years. Now, vacancies, of course, tend to get a lot of the attention, but we saw a net increase in about a dozen new businesses and two in downtown that moved to larger facilities over the last year. And of course, our Bloomington City Council approved the next phase to bring about a reimagined downtown last July, approving the Downtown Task Force Report as a roadmap for future development. And now we're working on an RFP to bring an architect in to move forward to the next phase. In addition to the difficulties that obviously we face, not just in our community, but throughout the United States, when I listen to the U.S. Conference of Mayors meetings, the virtual meetings that they have, and many of the, I get updates at least once a day, if not more, many communities are struggling to figure out how they can try to promote economic development amidst COVID. Well, we've got a lot of things that have just happened. Of course, a seventy-five-million-dollar expansion in Ferraro. We know, although it's not in Bloomington, Rivian is continuing to invest. We've got the Y MCA at OSF, a twenty-three-million-dollar, seventy-six-thousand-square-foot project that's moving forward. And of course, we've got many new restaurants, the new Biagis, the new Polk Works, the new Texas Roadhouse that's going to be coming at the old, the site of the former Toys R. Us. So we are moving forward in spite of the difficulties that we faced in the past. Again, while the, the common theme that we've seen has been that we've had difficulties, we have managed to come together, we have managed to do good things, including with our zoo, which as far as we know, is the only zoo on Route sixty-six in the entire two-thousand-two-hundred-mile stretch from Chicago to California. And that's certainly something we've seen with the DeBrosse's Monkey exhibit, the new theater, new concession. We've moved forward with a lot of this, and we've got money from the state. We are moving forward. It's not that Bloomington is sitting idly by. Bloomington is on the move. We are a great American city. We are making progress, but there's so much more than we can, that we must do. Certainly, one of the things that we must do, and I realize in the next three and a half months or so that I'm still mayor, that's not quite going to happen in three and a half months, but we need to move forward with, of course, rejoining MetCom. That's best, not just for the citizens in Bloomington, but throughout our entire community. If somebody happens to, let's say, live outside of McLean County, or in the rural areas of McLean County, or even in Normal, and they happen to be in Bloomington and they need nine-one-one, they need to be, as clear as possible, they need to make sure that they have direct access to someone who can help them move forward. So rejoining MetCom is long overdue. We should never have left to begin with, and again, regardless of the hurt feelings of seventeen to nineteen years ago, we need to get over it and move forward for what's, you know, the best in our, our community. And so while 2020 was a busy year, certainly, one of the things that we realized is that Bloomington was named number one happiest city in, by Zepia, and number one best city to live in after the pandemic by business leader. I'm not sure all the criteria that they used, but of course, they're right. because we know Bloomington is the center of the known universe. Um, as we go forward, I I certainly also want to say our finances compared to just about any city, anywhere. We are a leader. We're not in great shape, but compared to the financial meltdown or serious challenges that other communities face, we're doing extremely well. And much of that is because of the prudent financial decisions of this council, but also much of it is, perhaps most of it is, because of the wonderful decisions, the really prudent decisions that Mr. Gleason has made on a daily basis to ensure that we have, we're not going to lay off people. We're going to be able to make payroll. We are going to make sure that we have a surplus and we're going to continue to keep our bond rating. So for all of these things, I, as we move forward, I, the the two things, and they're again very different, as I mentioned to begin with, that I would hope that we would would pass or begin to make progress on in the next few months is moving toward Metcon and let's pass a welcoming city's ordinance. We should have done this years ago. It's not, this is not a sanctuary city. We're not risking anything. We are sending sending a message to the people in our community. We value you. We love you as a human being and you are someone of worth and value. And we are not going to try to export you. We are not going to try to get rid of you if you're a contributing member to our community. And so I would hope that we can do those things in the next few months. I continue to be very proud of our city. I know we are a leader and I hope that we continue to be a leader for other cities to follow in the future. Thank you very much. I I very much appreciate that and appreciate your time and indulgence. At this point, uh, unless there are comments, I'm not seeing any, uh, I'm going to move to item six A, excuse me, six B. And that's presentation of the Solid Waste Program as presented by the Public Works Department and the administration. And we've got approximately a 15 minute presentation and approximately a 20 minute council discussion on that. Obviously, because we're the committee of the whole, there is no action that will be taken this evening. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gleason. Mr. Gleason, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this truly is a kickoff conversation for the community. Uh, this is one, uh, we're going to take the opportunity to explain what the Solid Waste Program is, revisit the conversation that occurred early in 2018 and was implemented, I believe, by Council Action in May of 2018. This is something that when Kevin Cothe, you know, nearly a 35 year veteran of the city, was promoted into this position this time last year. This truly was a number one priority uh, because we felt, or I feel, saw early on that some of the uh, some of the things that were considered or discussed with the community are not sustainable. And uh, we have, we're not at the point where this is solutions or recommendations. Uh, just truly a walk down what was promised, what the program is. And Kevin's going to walk through this uh, presentation. And and real quick, I know my elected officials, there's probably two things that they hear from the residents the most, and that's condition of the streets. Uh, we're trying to address that. Uh, we plan to sustain the funding even with the loss of locomotor fuel tax in the upcoming budget, but that's yet to be decided. And then it's solid waste, uh, whether it's what's allowed at the convenience center, uh, whether it's branches, uh, you know, on the right of way. And understand the residents not wanting to, uh, uh, I'm sorry, branches in the streets, leaves in the streets, not wanting to necessarily put them where they belong in the right of way because may not get picked up soon enough. It kills grass. I I get it. Uh, some of the complaints with leaves washing into the storm sewer drains, those are problems. Uh, so this is just a kickoff conversation that our Public Works Director, Kevin Cothe, is going to begin. Kevin?
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. I just shared my screen with the presentation and I appreciate that introduction. Uh, Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to review our solid waste program. A lot of residents know that we provide, uh, see if I can get this to switch. Hang on, there we go. A lot of our residents know that we collect the garbage on a weekly basis, recycle. We pick up every other week along with bulk waste and brush. We do that every other week in in general. And, uh, you know, everybody's kind of familiar with that, but now everybody knows about the Citizens Convenience Center, which is just south of the library. The users of our solid waste system, those that pay a monthly fee on their utility bill are allowed to use that for taking in bulk waste or grass or appliances. And they can use that as as they would anytime, basically, right now. Uh, other things that you may not know, that our citizens may not know is that, you know, we have our crews clear brush and weeds and tree limbs from alleys, public alleys. Uh, we do the maintenance on them. We also have crews that clean the medians. So those areas on our public streets that even including on state routes, uh, we clean out the weeds or the debris that accumulates over time in those areas. Our crews also do maintenance on the gravel alleys. They repair and maintain them. Um, and so a lot, a lot of different things that the solid waste program does that not everybody necessarily knows or sees all the time. Uh, we also are implementing goals laid out in in various plans. And and those plans include like, for instance, uh, street sweeping for stormwater management, best management practices to sweep the streets on a regular basis so that debris doesn't go into the storm drains and get into our, uh, you know, streams and ultimately into rivers and so forth. Uh, our crews also are assisting with the snow and ice removal during the winter. So, uh, a lot of the same same trucks and drivers that are picking up the the brush and bulk, uh, you know, during their regular day are also the ones that are called in uh, for snow and ice removal during the winter. Uh, some of the things that the solid waste program, uh, those were kind of the overview of, uh, the different items, tasks that we do. But, uh, we also have to get rid of the stuff and we we contract with various uh, agencies and vendors to dispose of different things. So, uh, this is just kind of a a overview of a lot of the different contracts that come before the city council and and will be during the next few months. Uh, you know, street sweepings and garbage, bulk waste, brush, grass, leaves, recycling, all these things we collect, we actually have to get rid of those. And so we, uh, we work with our vendors to dispose of those things. Uh, these are contracts that we are either, you know, bidding or doing requests for proposals uh, or getting quotes and and putting together contracts that come before the council for approval. A lot of times, these can be contracts that are multi-year, that are given options to renew on an annual basis, maybe with a a cost adjustment. Uh, there's also, you know, partnerships here. Uh, for instance, with the town of Normal, we are getting ready to bid the, uh, or actually, we are bidding right now, uh, the garbage disposal. So our, our, you know, landfill contract, uh, with the transfer facility is is up here at the end of February. And so that's out for bid right now. We'll be opening bids very soon and you, as a council, will be seeing that come before you here in February for renewing that contract. But, uh, we we partnered with the town of Normal on some of these things to get, uh, you know, potentially better pricing because between the two communities, we have more more volume. And, uh, you know, we'll each sign our own contracts with those companies. But, uh, by bidding it together, we can sometimes secure better pricing because of the higher volume. Uh, besides the the material that we have to dispose of, uh, we also have some other contracts that we do, uh, including solid waste education program or the household hazardous waste. Uh, those are managed through, you know, the Ecology Action Center and as a as a good partner to to provide those services uh, for our entire community, including, uh, town of Normal contracts with them as well. And then other things like the electronics recycling where, you know, we partner with Normal on some of that stuff. Uh, and and then one that's coming up is another partnership that's under consideration uh, that will be coming before you soon. And that's the Dropbox Recycling, which is something that Normal has operated uh, for for quite a few years. And, uh, you know, in a study that was done recently with the Ecology Action Center, uh, there's quite a few people that live in Bloomington that use that Dropbox recycling program in Normal. So, uh, there's also quite a few in the county that use it too. So the consideration there is a partnership, a three-way partnership between Normal, Bloomington and the county to to keep that program going. So a lot of different pieces and sometimes when you just see it a little bit at a time, you don't don't realize that, uh, there's all these different aspects to to what we deal with. But, uh, truly quite a few, uh, uh, items that we contract out for. Tim, did you want to add anything to this?
No, not at that point.
Okay. So, uh, as Tim mentioned, uh, you know, in 2018, some changes were considered. Yeah, and and this is kind of just a a quick overview of those things. Uh, we have, uh, you know, the general fund that had subsidized the solid waste program. Uh, we also considered adding some additional equipment, routing optimization software and tablets. We have those today, um, in in the, uh, you know, garbage trucks that run the routes. Uh, we also employed some knuckle booms. We have a couple knuckle booms that, uh, you know, can haul more material than a single dump truck can. Um, but, uh, you know, there's certain areas of Bloomington where their operation doesn't work that well, where you have, uh, power lines in the way or a dense tree canopy, makes it hard to to operate that knuckle boom. You see in the picture, the boom goes up pretty high. So, um, we are able to leverage that in some of the newer areas of town that doesn't have the power lines or the trees that are in the way. Uh, roll offs were considered for the Citizens Convenience Center. Um, we also low, low income fee discounts and moratorium on adding additional mobile home parks into the collection system. Tim, anything to add at this point?
I probably should have said this on the front end, uh, my opening comments. But really what we're doing now, and this would have come, uh, you know, probably late spring, early summer last year, after Kevin had been on the job for a few months, but COVID occurred. Uh, but I do not want to go another season through 2021 without having this community conversation. Uh, and and this was the perfect time. I mean, some of the things that were implemented in February, late winter, early spring of 2018. You know, we're not necessarily saying that it was wrong, but with any major change like we had with solid waste, you have to reassess and you have to make sure that what you're delivering to the community is in fact, uh, turning out the way that you expected it to. And what we're finding is it is not. And that's again, the reason for the kickoff conversation tonight. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Tim. So some of those other aspects to the changes in in 2018 uh, included implementing a spring and fall free bulk waste collection. And and instead of picking up bulk every other week with the the past practice, uh, trying to encourage people just to put it out twice a year type of thing. But if somebody did in between, that we would charge $25 a bucket for pickup uh, from the curb. And that that bucket is a loader bucket or our standard end loader bucket. Uh, also brush, we did not have any changes to that, uh, you know, picking it up at the curb, uh, in essence, every other week. Uh, and then providing a a service at the Citizens Convenience Center where people could drop off for free. Uh, we also looked at some fee changes. So, uh, between FY18 and FY19, we had, uh, no change in the 35 gallon and low income fee, but we did increase fees, uh, from, uh, for the 65 and 95 by $4 a month. And then also implemented where on an annual basis, uh, the fees go up a a 3%. So, uh, this last fiscal year in the spring of 2020, as we were getting ready for FY21, we recognized that, uh, we're facing, in essence, a $1.3 million a year gap between, um, you know, the income and the expenses for this enterprise fund. And so that also includes, uh, you know, a reserve because as an enterprise fund, there should be roughly a 15% reserve of the operating budget. Um, you know, just to to catch things by if there's unexpected expenses. So, uh, we worked last spring to close that gap for the FY21 budget by adjusting some items, uh, in particular, some capital replacement items and so forth. But, uh, as as Tim mentioned, uh, we took on the task of of really diving in and examining uh, what we're doing and how we're doing it. And, uh, you know, uh, the next few slides all go into some of the things that we examined. But, uh, uh, Tim, did you want to add anything at this point?
No, Kevin.
So some of the things that we examined, uh, is the spring and fall bulk pickup. The, uh, you know, Citizens Convenience Center. Uh, we've, we've done some trials as we move into some ideas to to make it more efficient. And one of those was the roll offs. The roll off containers were basically large dumpsters that were being hauled by the vendor for us. Uh, and and that costs some money. Where with our dump trucks, um, we implemented this in August as a trial. And it seems to be very effective is that when when the trucks come in at the end of the day, the the loaders will will load them up to to haul out the spoils from the CCC uh, first thing in the morning. And, uh, it it really doesn't take any extra time to speak of because the trucks are headed out to their routes anyway. They just have to run by and drop off the material. So, um, you know, we're not expending that extra cost to have the dumpsters hauled out every day. We also looked at our our customers, you know, our customers of our solid waste system are those people that pay the monthly charge on their utility bill. And we started looking at at more closely those that are coming to the Citizens Convenience Center to make sure that they live in Bloomington, that they're, uh, you know, paying for the service on their utility bill and so forth. And then, um, we also looked at, you know, should, um, people that use it a lot potentially be be charged something for those extra uses type of thing. We, uh, as part of that, uh, for the brush as well, the the Citizens Convenience Center, for those that are not users of the system, making sure to identify them, that they they are not paying to to be able to dump there. Um, and then, uh, you know, considering alternative disposal methods for brush, uh, you saw earlier in the program that there was a substantial cost to dispose of the brush right now by a vendor. We also examined options, uh, you know, looking at the the leaf collection uh, that basically one month or a little bit more than a month that we spend a lot of effort collecting leaves and some of the frustration of the citizens is, uh, you know, Mr. Gleason noted with, uh, where they put the leaves in the parkway or on the curb or in the street or, uh, and then just, uh, as they blow around, uh, because we can't be everywhere all at once to pick them up. So, uh, just some different considerations there. Uh, and then, you know, just the garbage and recycle, you would think, well, that's pretty straightforward. But, um, as we dove into a little bit, you know, there's some different aspects that at one time made sense. But do they still make sense? For instance, recycle only service. We do, uh, provide that for some of our schools and and some other nonprofits. But, you know, it back in the day, uh, the recycle paid. The, uh, there was enough demand that, uh, you know, the cost to a transport and dispose uh, broke even with the, uh, what you glean from the sale of the recycle. But, uh, that hasn't been the case in recent years. So there's a more of a cost there. Um, and then just, you know, garbage and recycle pickup at city facilities, you know, should we be, as we're an enterprise fund, should we be charging, uh, uh, for those services? Uh, service efficiencies, just, uh, you know, routing software and be able to be more effective um, with our, our, you know, pickup. Uh, should we be charging one-time cart fees? If somebody wants an extra recycle cart, um, we're providing that at no cost right now. But should that be a charge downtown garbage is always an issue that uh, how can we make that better? Uh, other, other items that we looked at was a, a billing audit, just to make sure that the people that uh, you know, were picking up trash and recycle for on a weekly basis are, are paying, they're, they're being charged appropriately. Um, and so those are some, some internal checks that we can do and have to be deliberate and, and do that. But uh, we looked at that uh, the alley maintenance, the costs of doing the alley maintenance and, and uh that impact. Uh, storm cleanup, something that's very relevant right now, as uh many of you are aware. Uh, you know, our crews are, are running extra uh day, long days and, and extra effort with more crews to try to pick up all the uh brush, you know, that fell, all the tree limbs and, and so forth that uh came down in that New Year's uh, you know, ice storm. And uh, that cleanup will be going on for some time, but uh, the storm cleanup comes out of the um solid waste enterprise fund. So uh, that's a, can be a significant impact. And uh, as noted before, snow and ice vehicles, uh, the, the equipment that is in solid waste is used for, for that as well. There is a, a snow and ice fund that uh pays for the salaries and stuff for those drivers when they're doing snow and ice. Um, and then clean up and abatement from administrative court. You know, sometimes the uh, uh city takes people to, to uh administrative court when there's um some uh code, non-code compliant uh activities going on in yards or whatever. And uh, sometimes our uh solid waste crews have to go in and help clean that up and haul that out. So uh, there's that cost that solid waste fund incurs. And, and then of course, administrative fees across all the funds. Um, anything to add at this point, Mr. Gleason?
No, Kevin.
Okay. Well, that uh, kind of wraps up uh the presentation I had. I appreciate the time with you and I'll open it up to uh questions and discussions. As Mr. Gleason pointed out, this is the first and um, you know, just introductory uh conversation here at this point. Obviously a lot more detail to get to in the future, but uh just wanted to give that quick overview.
Thank you very much. We very much appreciate it. Uh, council members.
Mayor, I'm not sure if you can see hands this evening.
I ca- I can see uh, in the short run, I can see a council member Craybill. Oh, whoa, it's, it's shifting here. Okay, council member, I'm doing this, the order I see them. Council member uh Craybill, Matthew and Boland.
Perfect, thanks.
Jeff, go ahead.
Mayor, okay, sorry. Um, uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, so yeah, I re- I remember uh this passing uh what, what happened in two thousand eighteen. I, I was actually uh in Bloomington one-on-one and they always have a mock council meeting. And this was the agenda was passing this. So um, so, so Kevin, appreciate the presentation. Um, has there been an unexpected, I, I guess, um, increase in expenses or drop in revenue since this was passed in February of two thousand eighteen? That leads us to these, you know, what appear to be structural deficits?
Yeah, uh, you know, i- it's not a simple uh, you know, point to this. And, and this is uh, the, the, a gap in the shortfall. It's uh, as, as Mr. Gleason alluded to, you know, some, some things that were uh, you know, the, the best estimates at the time. And of course, uh, you know, sometimes things don't work out maybe exactly as you think they will. And just uh, you know, a combination of some different circumstances there. I mean, obviously the uh, if anybody has, has watched the recycle markets, they've uh, you know, uh, not been favorable in terms of uh, you know, actually paying for uh, you know, the material. So we've had to pay to, pay more to get rid of the material and so forth. So i- it's a combination of, of a, a lot of different factors uh that have, have led to the um gap that we have.
Uh, and, and have we seen an increase in revenue though? From the increase in fees on, on consumers and the three percent annual increase?
There, there has been some increase uh in revenue from that, but uh, you know, not, not enough to uh, 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 obviously to cover all the expenses that we're incurring.
A- a- and then uh, do you have an idea, but I know, I, I think the low income fee was initiated. Uh, is there a way to track um how much that, that costs versus not charging a regular rate?
We can uh, you know, that's some, some good feedback uh, uh, council member Craybill. And you know, we can uh look into that uh specifics a little bit more to uh see what that would be.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good service for our residents. Uh, but, but yeah, I, I don't want that, that to go on the chopping block if it's, if it's not a big part of the, of, of the deficit. So thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, Jamie.
Thanks, mayor. Uh, Kevin, I would like to see you, you put, showed us a chart of the price per ton for a bunch of those different um uh line items uh and expenses. I'd like to see the totals for each of those. Um, you know, to, to see, because I don't think uh, of, when you see five dollars and sixty-five cents a ton for brush pickup, that doesn't really help if we don't know how many tons of brush we're actually removing, right? So um, could you get that out for us at a future time so we can see what the, the total impact looks like as well?
Yeah, a- absolutely. Uh, council member Matthew, we uh, you know, we'll have more conversation moving, you know, forward on, on the bigger picture here with uh, you know, those details. And uh, we can certainly provide that uh, we have, we have uh, you know, the different vendors and the different totals of uh what we spend on an annual basis for that, and we can certainly share that information.
Okay, and then r- remind me with the low income charge, is that, does somebody have to request the discounted rate or is that just automatic if you take that smallest size bet?
Uh, I, I believe they have to apply for that uh, to, to qualify for that low income rate.
Okay, I just couldn't remember the details of how, how we got that part set up, so. Okay, thank you, Kevin. Appreciate the information.
Welcome.
Uh, Donna?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Kevin, for the presentation. And what I appreciated the most was the detail. I think a lot of people don't realize the um, everything that public works does for, you know, snow removal, recycle, garbage, street sweeping, all of that slumped in there. And I think that you presented it very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Uh, anybody else? I see, oh, uh, council member Maboka, middle of the way.
Okay, thank you, Kevin, for informative uh, uh, presentation. I, one thing that I, I was curious about was the routing software. If you could tell us, you know, what your uh appreciation of it has been uh during the time that it's been implemented. Has it been effective? Uh, or not?
Uh, to be uh perfectly honest uh with, with the council, uh, it, it hasn't been as effective as we would like it to be. And uh, we continue to work with the vendor to uh, to make it more effective, but we've had some uh challenges with it. And um, and, and so it, it has not been as effective as we'd like it to be.
And if I may, what, what are the challenges? What did you, what have you seen?
Yeah, so uh, some of the challenges are uh the, the tablets and the trucks and stuff. And uh, you know, sometimes it, it just uh won't boot up properly or, you know, some other technical difficulties with it. And then uh, just uh, you know, uh, as, as you operate uh on the streets, some, some concerns by some of our drivers and so forth about uh how it's used and things. So uh, a number of factors that we've been trying to work through and, and make it more effective. But uh, you know, I think uh, you know, the, the, the place where it would really help. And, and some of you are aware of this, that occasionally, you know, oh, we, we typically have the same drivers on the same routes every day. But you know, people get sick or take vacations and so forth. And uh, when you have a substitute driver, uh, that, that uh routing software would really help to make sure that we don't miss a block. I mean, I think all of you are aware that from time to time, uh, you know, we'll miss a block and have to go back and get it because uh, the driver doing the route might not be as familiar with it as the person who does it every day type of thing. So um, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, and then um, I also have a question about leaf pickup. You know, what, what have you seen? Um, how has it operated? Well, um, how effective has it been? And what would be possible solutions if it hasn't been? And I know it's still early in the process, but I.
Yeah, and, and we have some ideas that uh, you know, we'll be sharing with the council as, as we go forward with that. But you know, uh, certainly for, for this year, I will say that uh, you know, the, the adjustments we made during the year, whether it be uh, you know, delaying the uh spring bulk pickup to summer uh, or you know, how we did the leaf pickup this year. Uh, uh, some of those adjustments we made this year were, were the direct result of, of COVID adjustments. Because you know, we're, we uh normally use a lot of seasonal labor, you know, like for instance, with the leaf pickup, we'll hire a bunch of seasonals and have them ride in the uh dump trucks uh three abreast. Well, with COVID, that's not, not something that you're supposed to be doing. So uh, you know, we had those challenges where we wanted to protect our workforce because our workforce is very important. They do many different aspects of our operations. Uh, and so we, we adapted a little bit uh this year to, to try to keep everybody safe. And we didn't use as many seasonals uh because of the methods we chose to, to uh handle the, the uh pickup and stuff. And so that impacted some other operations, as many of you know, we, we suspended bulk pickup during our, our leaf operation and stuff. And so we've had to make adjustments along the way, but a lot of those, like I said, this year were, were really uh COVID and trying to keep our workforce safe.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. And then last question, and that could be either for you or city manager Gleason. But what are you um looking at in terms of timelines for these conversations to, to happen? And when would you like to have a, you know, a final solution?
Tim, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I will, Kevin. Uh, timeline for us, uh, again, this uh, you know, hopefully the community is hearing uh the positivity in this conversation. We've got a community to be extremely proud of in many areas, but especially on this front. Uh, so how do we maintain the level of service uh that this community expects and that I want for the community? Uh, while we said that we weren't going to talk about recommendations or solutions, a lot of the conversations, you know, over the past two and a half years that I've been here, they're coming from you guys. They're coming from the residents that are calling in uh with some criticisms or some concerns. But oftentimes they'll also throw out uh solutions. So regarding timeline, uh, we're going to work with you guys uh over the course of the next month. Round two is going to be a presentation at the February committee of the whole. And I really would like to have some decisions made uh before uh we start uh with spring, summer uh of this year. But I'm in no rush to make a bad decision. So uh, that timeline is not locked, uh, you know, it's not etched in stone.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? I don't see any other hands. Thank you again. Thank you, uh, Kevin. Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Appreciate all your uh help and work on this. Next, we're going to move on. Oh, I'm sorry. Was there somebody else?
I was just saying, thank you, mayor. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Kevin. Take care. Um, Leslie, uh, we're going to move on to Madam Clerk, the next item under C. Discussion regarding a council initiative submitted by council member Carillo for the city's legal department to draft an ordinance to provide direction and instruction to city staff, including the police department on how to interact with residents and other agencies as it relates to immigration issues. And um, and we have several options here. And that is to either have the initiative placed on a future city council agenda for further consideration or action. It's one. Two, have staff evaluate and prepare an analysis on the proposed initiative and bring it back for further council discussion. Or three, deny the initiative being placed on a future agenda. Uh, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to council member Carillo. You have about three minutes and then we have a very uh brief, approximately three-minute council discussion. And that would be just uh, which of these three options do you favor um as we move forward? Council member Carillo.
Thank you so much. And I just want to take a moment to thank all the people who spoke with so much corazón and passion and moral conviction during the public comment period um tonight, and not just tonight, but over the past several years on this topic. Um, you all are the best that our community has to offer. So I thank you for taking the time to be here. Um, so nearly four years ago, a number of local organizations like Illinois People's Action, the Immigration Project, the YWCA, GOSA, the Local DSA Chapter and more came together to form the Keep Families Together campaign. And they stepped to the Bloomington City Council to ask them to pass a welcoming city ordinance that would protect our undocumented residents um by establishing a very clear separation between ICE and local law enforcement. That is the heart of a welcoming city ordinance. Um, and the ordinance that council member Craybill and I are requesting staff to draft and to bring forth for a vote at a future council meeting through this agenda initiative mirrors that original ordinance that was proposed by the Keep Families Together campaign. Um, and I know this because I was one of the lead organizers of that campaign before I was on the city council. Um, so I'd like to highlight just some of the most important components of this ordinance and also to talk about the reasoning behind them. But first I do want to speak about process and reiterate some of what has already been said um by folks in public comment, which is that after four years of having hundreds of residents march and rally and fast and organize, um, and after um, these groups filed a FOIA which revealed very inappropriate communications between ICE uh and the Bloomington Police Department, um, which no one in local government at the time acknowledged, took responsibility for, or at least of all apologized for. And after countless attempts by uh various political actors uh to dodge the topic, um, either by having it pulled from the agenda or, you know, there's been a tons of ways that this could have been derailed. Uh, but now we're here and our people deserve a transparent decision-making process from us. And our people deserve a, deserve a vote from us on a true welcoming city ordinance. Uh, people deserve to know what their representatives stand for and what they're willing to fight for. So if you believe in full rights for immigrant residents, um, then I humbly ask you to join council member Craybill and I in supporting a true and strong welcoming city ordinance. Um, if you don't agree with what we're putting forth and you want to suggest an alternative, um, then vote to advance this conversation to a regular council meeting where we can vote. Um, you can introduce an amendment uh and it may pass or fail, but it will be a transparent process, process played out in the public where your constituents can see what you are advocating for and believe. And if you disagree, then vote no and stand by your disagreement. But let's not cut deals in the back room and let's not settle for the least common denominator. Um, and for, you know, for how many people ha- uh have mentioned Dr. King uh and probably paid lip service to him yesterday? I hope that you will heed his words, that we are called to speak for the weak, for the voiceless, for the victims of our nation. And for those it calls its enemy, for no document from human hands can make these humans any less our brothers and sisters. So colleagues, please, I ask you to do the right thing and advance our initiative so that people can get a long overdue vote on their, on their welcoming city ordinance. The time is always right to do what's right.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point then uh, we have just a kind of a very brief. I'm going to start with just uh, Jamie, uh, letting you know in advance, I'm going to start with uh, uh, Ward one and go to Ward nine, just essentially uh quickly uh, should we advance the initiative to put it on a future council agenda? Should staff prepare an analysis uh and bring it to a future council? Or um, do we just deny this? Uh, so I'm going to start with uh, council member Matthew and I'm going to go to council member Boland and then council member Wambwe. I'm going to go Ward one through nine around the, the, what would be the dais if we were there. Uh, Jamie?
The fun of being in Ward one right now. So yes, to bring, moving things forward. However, there's going to need to be options because I do not support all of the pieces of what has been presented. I've, I've talked to um Jen and Jeff about this before. I am, I'm happy and I supported last time the portions that would um, you know, that deal with immigration. And if we stays focused on immigration, then fine. But I think that there are pieces of this that wander loose of immigration and that's where my concerns lie. So um, you know, I think that this is not a, something we're going to vote on in the next two weeks, but it's something I think we can get to a collaboration where we have something everybody's happy with.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Donna?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, well, just a week ago, the welcoming America initiative was voted on unanimously. And unfortunately, a lot of people don't think there's enough substance to it. However, there is.
We, we really, uh, the, the whole discussion here is supposed to be three minutes, so it just.
Well, you know, Jamie had three minutes and I'm just going to throw this out.
I'm sorry, three minutes for everybody collectively.
Yeah, I understand. Um, these itemized demands can be handled through the welcoming America process. These itemized demands can be handled through the Welcoming America process. This ordinance is not welcoming. It's about protecting undocumented residents. Welcoming America also does that too.
Okay, so is that a no?
I will vote no.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Middlewamway?
Yeah, I'm going to vote no as well because I think the topic of immigration is extremely complex and I think it belongs, you know, in the arena of the federal government. And as far as I understand, there is a, you know, the, the incoming administration is looking at this particular topic very.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have let us get off too, it's like a sentence or so. Okay, so you're voting no. Okay, thank you. You're on record voting no. Councilmember Eme?
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. I think that, that we should push this initiative forward. I am ready to have staff work on drafting, but if not, that certainly going forward with the conversation. It has been clearly communicated to us by experts in the community and those who work with immigrants, that this is the one leadership action we can take that will make a difference. And it is not prohibited by law. Thank you for sharing Kwame Raoul's statement on immigration policy, Alderman Boland. I found that very, very useful.
Thank you. Thanks. Council, let's see, Councilmember Painter, sorry, I'm trying to figure out, Ward five, sorry.
I'm voting no on this because I think that our police have been horribly mischaracterized through all of this. I think our immigration, our immigrant population has been lied to and made to be afraid. And I think that that is unspeakably cruel. I think that it's self-serving and I think it's immoral. So no.
I think you're going in and out and I don't know if it's my computer or if it's happening for everybody, but I support my own initiative.
Yeah, I have spoken on behalf of a welcoming cities, cities ordinance for years and I look forward to this council finally taking action because no one in our community is safe until we're all safe. Yes. Mayor, you're on mute.
You're on mute. I didn't mean to do that to myself. Sorry. Councilmember Craybill, sorry.
Thank you. Last week, we said we're welcoming city. Tonight, we vote on whether we meant that. For the protection of our immigrants, for the health of our community, I vote yes to move forward with this welcoming city ordinance discussion. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the comments of everyone. I'm voting no to this. I think that some of the comments that have been made underscore the reason why this isn't the right solution for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I'm not mistaken, Madam Clerk, did we, we had five to four, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
So we do bring this forward and then some did suggest that staff would do a little bit of work on this. I would suggest that Councilmember Carrillo work with staff to come up with several options. I did, some who wanted us to move forward that wanted some additional options with respect to this, particularly Councilmember Matthew. So thank you very much. At this point, Mr. Gleason?
Thank you, Mayor. Just quick, City Manager comments, as far as the brush pickup after the storm, we're finding in, I'll say, I'm not going to use the word old, the more mature neighborhoods have mature trees that the Public Works crews are having to spend a little bit more time in those neighborhoods. We are still working on Saturdays, which is an additional shift just to catch up. Thank you.
Great. I, I like that. Our more, more mature neighborhoods, as I'm, I'm referred to as a more mature member or citizen of our community, I appreciate that in some ways. At this point, we don't have an executive session, so we're going to move to an adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Wow, a lot of people, okay. Councilmember Ward, second by Councilmember Boland. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Thanks a lot. Take care, everybody. Bye-bye.